Welcome to Larry C. Ragstil White Oak Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park features several tranquil lakes, vibrant playgrounds, and plenty of recreational activities, including a walking trail for everyone to enjoy.
From tranquil lakes to vibrant playgrounds, our park offers a plethora of amenities for you and your family to enjoy. Whether you're seeking adventure on our disc golf course, basking in the sun at our sand volleyball court, or simply taking a leisurely stroll along our walking trails, there's something here for everyone. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Larry C. Ragstil White Oak Park, where memories are made and nature thrives.
Welcome to Mulberry Rock Park located on the south side of Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers scenic walking trails, a great playground for children to enjoy, multipurpose fields, and plenty of outdoor recreational activities.
With amenities like our enclosed pavilion, multipurpose fields, and three miles of scenic pedestrian trails, Mulberry Rock Park provides the perfect backdrop for your outdoor adventures. Explore our community garden, let the kids unleash their imagination at the playground, or gather with friends and family at one of our five group pavilions for a memorable day in nature. Embrace the tranquility of Mulberry Rock Park as you stroll along the pedestrian trails or enjoy a picnic at one of our single-table shelters. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Mulberry Rock Park, where every moment is an opportunity to connect with nature and create cherished memories.
Welcome to Veterans Memorial Park located on the Watson Government Complex here in Paulding County, Georgia.
Our serene amphitheater and peaceful walking trail provide a tranquil space for reflection and gratitude. Within the park, you'll find monuments paying tribute to the heroes of Paulding County who sacrificed their lives in service, as well as those who perished in the 9/11 attacks. Children can enjoy laughter and play on our well-equipped playground, while visitors can stroll along the scenic half-mile trail surrounded by the beauty of nature. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Veterans Park, a place of honor, remembrance, and gratitude for our nation's heroes.
Welcome to Mount Taber Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers a variety of recreational facilities and plenty of outdoor activities for everyone to enjoy.
From our serene half-acre lake to the abundance of recreational facilities, Mount Taber Park offers an array of opportunities for outdoor fun and relaxation. Get your heart pumping in our aerobics room, gym, or on our exhilarating mountain bike trail, there's something for everyone to enjoy. Take a leisurely stroll along our scenic walking trail, or let the little ones burn off some energy at our playground. For more information and to discover our upcoming programs and classes, please call Mount Taber Park at 770-505-3885, or visit our website to register online. Mount Taber Park, where nature meets recreation and memories are made.
Making online threats about safety at your school or anyone's school is a serious crime. Lists of targeted schools, images of weapons, talking about shooting up schools, anything of this nature, whether it's Snapchat, Instagram, or TikTok, will not be tolerated. Even if you forward these types of posts, you could get into serious trouble. Making threats against schools is a serious crime. You could be permanently expelled, you could be arrested, and you can go to jail. Be smart, don't do it, it's no joke. There is no excuse for spreading fear. The moment you hit sin, you could be committing a serious crime. Law enforcement has the technology and resources to track these types of messages. If you post threats against a school, we will find you. If you see a threat post, report it, don't share it. Threats against public schools are a very serious crime. It's no joke.
If you overhear a threat against our school or any students or staff, reporting it right away is crucial. It's your responsibility. It doesn't matter how it was intended. School threats are no joke. Don't pass it along and don't spread rumors. Report it to a teacher, an administrator, or a school safety officer. Report it, don't share it.
They better not come to school tomorrow, someone's gonna get hurt.
If you see or hear something, then say something to an adult. Your action can make a huge difference to help keep our schools safe. Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke.
School safety is on everyone's mind these days, and even a simple comment to a friend can cause fear and confusion. When you're talking with your friends online, at school, or even on the school bus, don't make comments about weapons or threats to school safety. If you make verbal threats or talk about bringing weapons to school, joking or not, you will face serious consequences. Be smart, don't do it, it's no joke.
Base two, this is bus 16, I have got an emergency.
The words you use are incredibly important. Think before you speak. If you make a threat, whether serious or not, you can cause great harm to others and end up facing serious consequences. Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke.
We are so excited to bring our first tag kiosk to the people here in Paulding County. So our first tag kiosk is located here at the Kroger off of 278 and 61 in Dallas. So one of the main benefits of us having the tag kiosk here at the Kroger is you can renew your tag anytime that this Kroger is open. Here at our tag kiosk, it prints your decal out instantly. Anyone can use our kiosk here at Kroger as long as your county participates in the tag kiosk program. Any Paulding County resident can use a tag kiosk anywhere here in Georgia, and there is a URL code that you can scan and find out which kiosk is the closest to you. If there's ever any questions about the tag kiosk, you can contact us here at the Paulding County Tax Commissioner's Office. Our telephone number is 770-443-7584.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this month's meeting for the Paulding County Planning Commission. I would ask at this time, if you have any audible devices, anything that makes a noise, turn it off, turn it to silence, so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. I'm gonna ask for a review of the minutes from the Planning Commission at this time. Have you had an opportunity to review it? Do you have any edits or noted concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion with regard to the minutes from October 22nd, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Mr. Steele. Second from Ms. Fitzgerald, all in favor. Motion passes 5-0 and 1. Before we get started, if you'd like to read how to participate in a public meeting, there should be a brochure on the back table there, please take one with you. But just to cover the high notes, each, the Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body for the Board of Commissioners specifically. We'll hear each application that comes before it. Anybody speaking on behalf of the application, including the applicant, will receive 15 minutes. They'll utilize, the applicant may utilize all of that time or may reserve some for rebuttal if they see fit, and that is a cumulative 15 minutes for anyone speaking on behalf of the application. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, 15 minutes is allotted cumulatively for that as well. If you have a line behind you, if you would, please be mindful of those people wishing to speak because it's a total of 15 minutes there as well. Again, the applications heard today that go to the Board of Commissioners will be forwarded to the December 10th meeting at 2:00 PM. The application that's before us for the city of Hyrum will be forwarded to the city of Hyrum zoning administrator for determination to be made for advertising requirements as to the date of the public hearing there. So before we get started, Mr. Robinson, is there any announcements you need to make?
I just wanted, just for the record, application 2412 SUP and application 2403 SPSA, they were originally scheduled for the October meeting, and that was announced that we, that had moved to this meeting on November.
All right. So at this time, if you would.
Okay. First application is 2436Z, city of Hyrum, application, application by Legit M. Patel, requesting to rezone 2.66 acres from B2 Highway Business District to I-1 Light Industrial District for development of a two-story self-storage facility accompanied by impervious drive, customer parking, RV boat, parks, and a stormwater detention facility. Property is located in Landlots 544, District 2, Section 3. It's located at the northwest intersection of Pace Court and Pace Road within the city limits of Hyrum. Sin Commission Post 3. Staff is recommended denial with a recommendation of three stipulations if it's approved. And just a little history, this application came in 2023-13Z, and it became before the Planning Commission in '23, and it was recommended denial, and there was no action in Hyrum. I do believe the applicant may have withdrew at that time. There was application 2425Z, city of Hyrum. That application came before you back in July, and it was dismissed because the applicant didn't show up, and so we're here today.
And is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
If you would, please come around, sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Where do I need to sign in?
There should be a sign-in sheet to the right of the lectern.
Hey, my name's Michael Corcoran, address 500 Sun Valley Drive, Roswell, Georgia, and I'm the engineer here on behalf of the applicant. We were scheduled for the previous hearing, I think it was last month, but we didn't make it here in time, so now we're at this hearing here. We are proposing the property in the city of Hyrum to be rezoned from B2 to I-1. The use itself is very low impact to city or county infrastructure. It generates very little traffic, very little impact on sewer infrastructure or water. I believe there's one or two restrooms in the facility, so there'll be very low impact on that. Currently, the property to the north of us is zoned, is a residentially zoned property. Right now, with the B2 zoning district, there would not be any zoning buffer in place or landscape buffer in place, but when we rezone to the I-1 zoning, we'll be required to put in a 50-foot landscaping buffer between the properties. So the residentially zoned properties to the north are getting a use next to it that's very low impact, creates a 50-foot landscaping buffer, and that wouldn't be there if the property was developed in B2 today. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have, but that's, that's all I have.
You've seen the three stipulations recommended by the county, if you should receive a favorable recommendation?
Yes, and we're, we're good with all three of them.
Now, the elevation of the property and how the development may take place, is that going to be at or on the same elevation as the residential property behind it?
Yeah, it will be, I'm not sure of the elevation difference. Let me see if I have that. 60? It looks like it will be sitting below it. The residential property, you go uphill, looks like the elevation right at the property line is approximately 1064, and at our entrance to the development, it would be, it's kinda hard to read, about 1040, no, 1050, 1054. So it would be sitting below it.
And your proposed interest would be off of Pace Court?
Yes. One entrance off of Pace Court.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I have a question, you're aware, this one has been in front of this board before. Mr. Robinson has stated that, what, what was the date, Mr. Robinson, of the first time we saw this? It was 2013?
I don't have an exact date, but it was 2023-13Z, and I know that they would have had, we would, it was over a year.
Okay, so it was in the year of '23?
Since, a year from this past July.
Okay. And then we were supposed to have seen it before.
In July.
And it got pushed out. Did it ever make it to the city of Hyrum?
2023-13Z did.
And what, what did they say about?
Did have a recommendation from the Planning Commission of denial, and it was forwarded to the city of Hyrum.
And then for our, our comprehensive plan, it doesn't meet it?
This property is within a high-intensity commercial retail service area based on our comprehensive plan and Hyrum plan.
So from you guys reviewing it and looking at it, has anything changed from this submittal as from the submittal a year ago?
No, sir.
Any of the surrounding properties changed? Any of the surrounding zonings changed?
No.
Nothing changed? It's the same thing?
It's exactly the same application.
Okay. All right, that's all I got.
Any questions to the applicant?
I guess I got a question.
I guess I got a question. You know, kind of going on what Mr. Steele said, it's been brought before the commission and several times. What's kind of the driving factor that your decline is, or the applicant is wanting to push outside of the buffer? What's the driving factor to take it from a B2, currently B2 commercial zone property, which you can do what you're trying to do through a special use permit?
No, you cannot.
You can't through?
Not in the City of Hiram.
Okay, well, so in the end, so that's the reason why we're going through the industrial because of the City of Hiram?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, that answers my question.
Thanks.
Okay. Bear with us.
Is this the same application that the street wasn't wide enough to accommodate the business?
I don't.
Pace Road.
I don't believe that was the issue, though.
Because it came up before that the street just wasn't wide enough.
I don't recall that being the issue.
I didn't say it was an issue. I just know that it came, it was in there.
If it was mentioned, then it would have, I mean, I don't recall it.
Okay.
That's all right. Are there any other questions to the applicant? You may take a seat. We'll call you back if you want to make a rebuttal on anything. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. If the applicant would like to speak back to anything that was said or asked of the staff, you may do that, or if you're good, we can move forward.
I'm good.
Okay. So at this time, we will entertain a motion on application 2024-36-Z for City of Hiram.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Steele.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Callahan. All in favor. Motion to deny passes five, zero, and one. Again, the results will be forwarded to the City of Hiram. The applicant may give the City of Hiram a call as far as dispensation from this point forward for their actions. All right. Mr. Robinson, please.
Okay, next application is 202412 SUP. It's application by Christopher Zakarowicz, requesting to rezone, requesting a special use permit on 9.03 acres within the A1 Agricultural District to operate two family businesses. One is a mobile coffee trailer, and the second is a paintball facility. Property is located in Landlot 102, District 19, Section 3. It's south of McPherson Church Road. It's on the east side of the Silver Comet Trail and east of Hanlon Road. Send Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with 12 stipulations. And the applicant is present. We have had an email in opposition that was submitted and is within your packet.
Would you please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Zakarowicz, and address is 2557 McPherson Church Road. The property, the business property address is 2555 McPherson Church Road. My family and I, we own 60-plus acres of property, and we're, we would propose to segment out nine acres for two businesses, paintball as well as a coffee business. We do have a coffee trailer that is permitted through the County Health Department, so that's already passed, and we're ready to go. Very excited about that. And it's just very simple. We have a farm on our property, and thus the name Coffee Doodle Doo. We have, you know, farm animals. We have a, we feel like a really good attraction for Paulding County residents to come visit and enjoy some coffee on that side of the property. We also have a potential for a paintball with about seven acres dedicated for a paintball business. We've already cleared paths throughout the property and have a big field opening. We would not do any upgrades to the property there. It's just simply, you know, using the property as is on that, on that side. You know, we beautified the area for the coffee trailer business. We have seating, picnic tables, and have some games for families and kids. Really want this to be more family-oriented for the local community, and just open for any questions you may have.
Well, I'll always kick it off by asking the applicant if they're aware of the recommended stipulations, in this case, 12 of them.
Yes, I am.
That have been made, and you're in agreement with all 12 of those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it to the Planning Commission for any questions to the applicant.
I've got a few questions. So it looks like your parcel is accessed via an easement. Do you not, do you own the easement, or do you own out to the county road to McPherson Church?
Yeah, the first part of our driveway off McPherson Church Road is an easement. We have a, you know, our neighbors are very friendly with us, and we have no issues with the, with the business proposition.
So with it being an easement, you know, the right of ingress egress, I mean, does everyone that it crosses, that your traffic, you know, coming and going, are they aware of any kind of traffic count you may have? I mean, if you open paintball and, you know, I don't, I don't know the business. I don't know how many come, how many go, but, you know, typically what we see on private easements, you know, is usually just residential. You don't see any typical type of business on a, on a small private drive that's probably not paved, it's probably.
Yes, sir. We've addressed quite a bit of that. So as far as the easement, this is rural land, and we don't even, you can't see our neighbors. It's just, it's wooded property. Even where the driveway is, I mean, you can see through the trees, but our neighbor's very friendly with us. And as far as the road goes, or the driveway is, we brought in about $15,000 of material to widen the road to 20 feet. It's 20 feet wide, the entire driveway. We've upgraded it. It's, it's very driveway, you can drive a fire truck past the car on that driveway.
You say the neighbors are friendly with it. How many neighbors are there? Because when I looked at the parcels, it looked like, from this particular nine acres, that you had to cross at least two to three different parcels through that easement.
Right. We have Mr. McPherson, who owns the triangle at the head of the driveway.
Okay.
He actually lives at the very end of our driveway as well, so he has a small parcel there. And I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the other name. There's about probably a couple hundred yards, maybe 150 yards of driveway that one of our other neighbors to the east of us owns as part of his property. He really, he doesn't use that part of the property at all. It just, just happens to be part of his property. So there is that easement, and it's not a problem with him either.
I've got a question for Mr. Phillips on easements. Ingress egress, does it, does it matter, the amount of ingress egress? I mean, from a volume standpoint?
Every easement has to be looked at individually to see what the easement says. You know, for instance, just thinking aloud, if he were not to open a business and were to simply have a group of friends over there to engage in paintball, they would be his guests, and they would be entitled to use his ingress egress easement. Because easements are private in nature, you'd have to look at the scope of each one to figure out whether there are any limitations.
I just think with us issuing a SUP for a business that doesn't have direct access to a county road, that we're allowing for increased traffic across other people who are not here making the application. Just a food for thought.
Mrs. Jill, if I could address something to the traffic count, we really do not expect heavy traffic count. We have 25 parking spaces with some overflow. We do, I don't expect to ever have more than 25 to 30 vehicles parked at a time, and this would be over an eight-hour period throughout the day. Again, do not expect heavy traffic in this area.
And I think, I think one of your stipulations, too, is probably for a traffic memo of stating that.
And I did email Chris Robinson a traffic memo as well.
And also for, I mean, it's an activity where safety may come, you know, I mean, hopefully you would never need emergency vehicles down there, but with it being a private road that the county has no maintenance or no, nothing with, keeping it accessible for.
Yes, sir.
Emergency vehicles is another concern.
Yes, as I addressed, I've already put $15,000 of additional material. It's heavy pack slate-type material that is clay-based as well, so it packs tight. And, I mean, you can drive down that road, you can drive a fire truck, you can drive a semi-truck down that road. It's just fine.
The, the coffee business side of it, the paintball, are they all separate? I mean, would the coffee business be open when paintball's not, or vice versa, or?
The paintball, we have open till dark, is what we submitted. Coffee business shuts down at 5:00. So paintball is just dependent on summer hours, you know, when the sun's up and you can see. So not all the time, but most of the time, we would have coffee and refreshments available on the, on the coffee business side as well.
And you're aware that you'll have to go through, you know, the departments for review and parking requirements and so forth set with the development itself?
With Chris Robinson, I've met with county officials as well and had separate meetings about all this, so I.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got.
Any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Hearing none, may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? So hearing none, come back to, I know we had some correspondence that was forwarded that was in opposition basically to this proposal. A lot of it has been regarding some of the things that you brought up, from concerns over safety, permitting certain items, and making sure that they are inspected. Now, that would, I think that was covered well enough for us to move forward unless you want to ask additional questions of staff. So hearing none, then, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2024-12-SUP. Make a motion to approve where the stipulations are stated. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Callahan with 12 listed stipulations. I have a second from Mr. Aston, all in favor. All opposed. Motion passes three, two, and one. It will be forwarded to Board of Commissioners meeting on December 10 at 2:00 p.m. Applicants should be represented there. Mr. Robinson?
Next application is 202403 SPSA Site Plan Stipulation Amendment. It's application by Michelle McCauley, requesting to amend the site plan within the master planned residential district for a more appropriate design which aligns with geotechnical and environmental constraints as it relates to applications 200501Z, which is a planned residential development district, and 202103Z, which was MPR district. Property is located in Landlots 699 through 701, 741, 770 to 773, 812 to 815, 842 to 845, 88. District 3, Section 3. It's on the west side of Seven Hills Boulevard, north of Brightside Parkway. Send Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval, and just note that the conditions and stipulations from zoning case 200501Z and 202103Z will remain intact.
And seeing as how you've signed in, if you would please state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle McCauley. I work with Gaskins-Lacroix. We're located at 3475 Corporate Way in Duluth, Georgia. It's my pleasure to be before you this afternoon. What I have for you is a site plan amendment for a new community that's going to be called Pine Hill Trails. This is not a rezoning. We are combining two previously zoned properties into one larger community to be called Pine Hill Trails. The first is the PRD zoned property that was zoned back in 2005. It's often referred to as the Abney-Austin Township. It was approved for 941 lots. The second zoning is an MPR zoning that was zoned back in 2021. It's also commonly known as Sheffield Trails. That was approved for 710 lots. What we're doing is getting the site plan for the overall community. It reduces the amount of approved units from 1,651 down to 1,129. Here is an aerial image showing the property. It has a yellow star on it. It is on the west side of Seven Hills Boulevard, between Wild Timber on the north and Ivy Meadow to the south. The active adult community of Serenity is directly across Seven Hills from us. Here is the property outlined in red, shows the underlying zoning. The MPR tract is there in yellow, and the PRD is purple. As I've mentioned before, we are not rezoning these tracks. They will both remain as MPR and PRD, and we will meet the development standards within each district within one unified plan. So when you're driving through the community, there will be different house sizes, different lot sizes, but you will not be able to tell that you've driven from a PRD community into an MPR. It'll be one unified plan for the whole community. Here is our site plan, and there is, in your packet, there's also pictures, and I have some if you want to look at it. Now, it's very difficult to look at. This is 11 pods, 1,129 units. The goal for me today is to help break that down for you so you understand what the, what the plan is. So here is the PRD tract. It is 297 acres. There will be 533 homes within this portion of the community. The density is 1.79 units to the acre. Minimum lot width is 60 feet. The lots will range between 8,000 and 12,000 square feet. The minimum house size is 1,400. Along Seven Hills Boulevard, there is a 75-foot undisturbed buffer, and along the other perimeters, there is a 25-foot buffer. So where it joins the existing MPR, we are showing a 25-foot buffer there. There is, the amenity for the community will be located within this portion of the community. That amenity is actually a requirement of the MPR, but for the overall site plan, we are locating it here. This is the MPR portion of the property. It is 355 acres. It will have 596 homes. The density here is 1.68 units to the acre. The minimum lot width is 65. The lots will range from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet. The minimum house size is 1,800. Again, there is a 75-foot buffer along Seven Hills Boulevard, and then there is a 50-foot external buffer, and then a 50-foot buffer between the pods. So where the two communities align, they're in the middle, there was actually 75 feet. So we are adhering to all the requirements of each underlying zoning district within this project. So what's often brought up in questions like this is schedule. So in your packet, there's a full development schedule that we had to put together as part of our application, but here's just a simplified version of that. The first step that needs to be achieved is sewer agreement extension. This project requires two lift stations. The second step in the process would be a preliminary plat. We would be applying for one preliminary plat for the entire community, and that sets our sort of threshold date for the start of development. Then, once we go from preliminary plat, we start submitting LDPs, and then within, once an LDP is approved, then And then within, once an LDP is approved, then the plan is to hopefully plat each LDP within 18 months. So if you go through the development cycle that's in your packet, you will see how we get through the process. Okay, as I mentioned before, there are two phases in this project and they're tied to the sewer lift station. So phase one is the southern portion of the community. It will be developed first. We anticipate three land disturbance permits for this phase. The cycle from preliminary plat to build out of the first phase is roughly five years. And then we would hope that the first homes would be started for construction in two years. So the start date for all these development goals is the preliminary plat. So once we get a preliminary plat, then we start the cycle. Here's phase two. This is the second lift station. It's 461 lots. Again, we're expecting three LDPs. And the nine year development cycle here, that's from the issuance of the first preliminary plat. So there's lots of things that can happen in the next nine years, as we all know, but the general goal will be that this community would be built out in nine years from the issuance of that preliminary plat. There will be two home builders, national home builders in this community, D.R. Horton Homes and Fisher Homes. These are both, as I just mentioned, national home builders. They build quality product. There will be a variety of elevations, materials, architectural features. I'm going to show you now some of the elevations just so you can get a feel for what these community and what these homes will look like. This is the Westerly and the Windbrook from D.R. Horton. This is the Halton and the Hayden, and you see underneath what the individual parameters. So the Halton there is a five bedroom home, three bath, a two car garage, 3,000 square This is the Robie and the Cali that are built by D.R. Horton. The Cali is a two story sort of, I mean cottage style one home with 1,700 square feet. These are the Fisher Homes. This is the Jensen and the Yosemite, the Morgan and the Wilmington, the Avery and the Charles. And with that, I know I've given you a lot of information. Very quickly, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have representatives of D.R. Horton and Fisher Homes here with us. The lead engineer is here if you have any questions, but with that, I would ask for your recommendation of approval.
Thank you for your presentation. I know that we're not talking about stipulations, so let me just go ahead and go to the floor for the planning commission and open it for questions.
I'll go with a question to staff for a second. So Mr. Robinson, two previous zonings, one in 2005, one in 2021, and all those stipulations are still attached to these?
That is correct.
Okay. Fisher and D.R. Horton, you showed us some of their elevations, some of their plans so we can see what they're doing. Nine years, things can change, those plans can change.
Absolutely.
Styles, taste, all change. Their collections, I mean, that, that's just a sampling of what they may do?
Well, those are the home plans that are targeted for this community, but what I'm just going to say about that is that, so with each home, there are different elevations that you can choose, there are different color palettes, there's different treatments, rock, stone, brick, things of that nature. So those may change, but those are the general floor plans that you will have in the community.
Because in the packet, there was, there was a considerable amount more houses that were what we saw, so.
Right. I just limited it for presentation purposes, otherwise I would have had a lot of.
Because I had just had a question about a few of them.
Sure.
I build for a living as well, but just some of the styles is not typical of what we see around here, what you showed us in this presentation is.
Right.
So I know, I know it can change and I know, you know, we, we see different styles come and go. So I'm good with that, that answer on those. On the, on the density, you showed your density and you showed, you know, a 500, 522 lot decrease. I, I know Mr. Wicks will probably appreciate that one.
I'm not talking about that.
That, uh, can you, can you give me a little more info on, in the PRD, you show 8,000 square foot lots and 12. Can you give me an idea of how many of those lots are 8,000, how many are 12,000?
I don't believe I have that number. That's the range that's within the stipulations. So the homes are generally 60 feet wide, 60 and 60 foot wide lots. But yeah, I don't have, I don't have a breakdown.
Okay. Because, because looking at Horton's plans, when you get to three, when you get into a three car, you get into maybe a 48 or 46 wide foot house, it's going to require a wider lot. I was just curious if you knew how many 8,000, how many 12? And then MPR, the same thing, how many eights and how many tens?
No, that's just the range that was in the stipulations, just to show you that we intend to meet those stipulations.
And was your deduction in 522 because of the site itself? I mean, was it in the layout and the topography and rock and?
Yes, sir. It was mainly due to topography and then also part of the reduction is that we do have to meet the buffer standards between the two zoning districts. So we have to have those gaps, so yes. But mainly it's because of the natural features on the property.
Okay. And from other staff, maybe water, sewer, DOT agreements, sewer, water, any kind of things that we have, concerns or?
Lot capacity is what you're.
I mean, any, anything that we've, is everything still good? I mean, these are two projects that have been around for a while.
Can you hear me? The DOT side, so you're looking at these stipulations as, but also there's a development agreement that discusses traffic, traffic impacts, multiple responsibilities from the county and from the development.
Mr. Steele, I handle from the, from the water side, there is a gap sewer agreement that expired last week that's been in effect for the last five years. There are some current discussions about extension of that, but that's, that's where that is right now. The essence of the agreement is that Paulding County would contribute $1,050,000 for construction of the gap sewer. If that agreement has expired, that obligation is, is no longer there. However, you know, that's, that's not necessarily the end of the analysis for the county.
Okay. Answers my question. Mr. Wicks?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, you know, you've alluded to the fact that it is not a rezoning, you're not coming here for a rezoning. So everybody knows that this is a bustling community. This is one of the most thriving areas that we've got, highly dense, highly compact and a lot of density inside of this area. So a 522, you know, unit or lot reduction, as Mr. Steele alluded to, that's a, that is definitely going to be a benefit, you know, to the school system. On one perspective, I would love to be able to see it trees and, and continue on, but knowing that you've already got commitments, you've already got vestments, you've already got things in there, I will say that going back, regardless of whether or not it's topography, whether or not it's natural beauty, you know, trying to, to get that overall central feel of the overall development and going back and reevaluating and having a reduction in homes and bringing that, there is a certain aspect of that that is commendable from, you know, just a overall standpoint. So just the overall reduction of 522 homes, that's a significant impact to the school system.
Thank you.
I would concur with you on that too. I mean, I do worry about the, the onerous burden that gets put on the county resources, but when you're talking about alleviating, you know, 500 homes, I think that that's, it's commendable considering what it could have been.
So does anyone else have a question to the applicant? You may take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion on application 2024-03-SPSA.
I make a motion we approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Aston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Steele, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. And again, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration on December 10th at 2:00 PM. Mr. Robinson?
The final action today is a zoning ordinance text amendment. That's included in a public hearing. The Paulding County Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners today are considering a text amendment to Title II zoning of the Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County. It's Chapter 280 involving planning commission.
Director Lippman, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Good.
Um, today's text amendment, this will be the eighth amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance and only affects Chapter 280. The, the main reason of the amendment was a few additions ago when we split up the planning commission meeting and when the Board of Commissioners voted on the items that start before you guys. When we split that up, we forgot to make the requirement that the applicant be president at the BOC meeting. So that is the first adjustment. That requirement was under a section that was called initiation of amendments. I didn't think that was the right place for it, so it's been put twice under the public hearing process for the planning commission and then the decision by the Board of Commissioners. And in coordination with the Department of Transportation, I know a lot of the times when we get the cases, this change is to sort of help speed things along. A lot of times we get an application, it needs a traffic study. They don't get a traffic study. So now we have just put in information required, where thresholds where that traffic study is required. And then Department of Transportation had written up as part of our development regulations update, what would be required in a traffic impact analysis, and so that has been included in the back of the chapter. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions to our director?
Yeah, I have a couple. So just to clarify, on the first one, on the first part of it, just, you need to be here. I think we all agree with that. On the second part, just want to clarify something. On the traffic study, it will have to be done and presented to this board at the time of, at time of applications.
Correct. That will be part of, one of the application requirements if they meet the thresholds. I can, I'm happy to go over the thresholds just for discussion purposes.
I'm good. And it's only for things being rezoned, it's not for something existing zoning.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
As I sort of alluded to, DOT had written this in partnership with our development ordinance update. So this section will become part of the development regulations. So that would affect properties that may not need zoning. That would tell them when they need to do a traffic impact analysis. So in the future, it will affect properties that have already been zoned, but today it affects properties that are requesting zoning.
Just a, I guess, an ignorant question on my part. If submitting a traffic study with what is basically just proposed uses and concept drawings, there's something that would trigger that traffic study to be refined or more defined by the time it gets to plan review? Is that correct?
I would say it's a possibility depending on what is submitted. A supplemental may come in, you know, with all the requirements that are listed as part of a traffic study. Maybe there's something that staff may disagree with or again, it may be absolutely agreeable in terms of the staff. So again, I think it's case by case, situation by situation.
But the DOT would have the authority to require another one?
Or basically update the traffic study or amend the traffic.
Okay. Because you would have, I mean, you would have the potential for an amendment just on the case we just heard, where you went from 1,700 lots to 1,100 or something. And if they did the study in 2005, traffic's changed in 2024, so it.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions to the director or for community development or transportation? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this topic? Long pause. Hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and then I will ask the planning commission if you will please provide a motion on the zoning ordinance text amendment presented.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Wicks. Didn't mean to interrupt you, did I?
No.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Mr. Callahan, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. And that should conclude all the regular business. Mr. Robinson, is there any announcement you need to make? Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Won't see you until next year. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, happy birthday for anybody in between. At this time, I will accept the motion for adjournment and adjournment only.
I'll make a motion again.
Mr. Steele, Mr. Wicks, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one. Have a blessed November, December.